The time is now six thirty-one, calling this being to order. Present is Councilmember Yarborough, Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor Pro Tem Mize, Councilmember Corneilson, and Councilmember Hodges. A quorum is present. Tonight's invocation will be Pastor Tucker. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Most gracious and loving heavenly Father, we do come before you this evening, once again thanking you for this opportunity together. We ask for your peace, your patience, your hope, your encouragement during this meeting. We just ask for your wisdom in deciding the issues of this council and for this, your community of Godly. And we just give you all thanks, honor, and praise for this opportunity and for this day. Thank you most of all, though, for your son, Jesus Christ. It's in his name we pray, as we pray through the power of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all and all.
We have nobody that signed up for public input tonight. We'll be moving on to mayor and council reports, presentations, and proclamations. First thing on that is I know we had some issues this week, had some issues with the agenda. So for those that were confused, if we just rotate it, you'll be able to read it. Ms. Winkle?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, staff started a employee of the quarter recognizing our employees each quarter. This I bring to you tonight, we have an employee for the first quarter and one for the second. These were nominated by their directors for the first two quarters. The last two quarters will be nominations from coworkers. And so carrying on, it will be coworkers. And if they find somebody doing something above and beyond the call of duty, something kind to another person, those kind of things, we want that to be sent out and a nomination is made. This particular nomination with Thomas McDonough. Was written by Sean Holden, his supervisor. And so I wanted to recognize him. Our employee of the second quarter is not here tonight, but I'm going to catch him at our next council meeting. They had a pre-planned event, so. The Public Works Department wants to recognize Thomas for the employee of the quarter. In the transition to a new director, Thomas took on many responsibilities and kept the department focused on immediate needs to continue to provide services to the community. Thomas's dedication to the city of Godly should be commended, and we appreciate all that he does, and we thank him for his hard work. And so I'm really proud of that because that's all very true. I can testify to it. I had a lot of questions when we didn't have a Public Works Director, and so I relied very heavily on Thomas. So he's a very, very good employee, and I'm very proud to present him with the employee of the first quarter for the city of Godly. And I'll let you know that our second employee of the quarter was Spencer Templer with the Police Department. So I'll make sure he's here next time, next meeting. That way we can recognize him. That's all I have.
Next item is consent agenda. Discuss possible action approval of the Godly City Council minutes from the regular meeting held on May twenty-first, 2024. Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on May twenty-first, 2024.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Mize and a second from Councilmember Hodges to approve the minutes from the Godly City Council regular meeting held on May twenty-first, 2024. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on May twenty-first, 2024. Next item is discuss and take action on the ratification of the payment in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-two cents for the Kubota SVL seventy-five dash three HF WVCC by the Public Works Department purchased in October of twenty-three.
We did authorize this, did we not?
Ma'am?
It's my understanding from the information that I can gather that you probably approved the funds through ARPA, but the monies were never, the cash, the money was never approved to make the payment. So the PO was issued, that's why the piece of equipment was delivered. It was delivered on the purchase order agreement. And so therefore, we, no payment had ever been made on it. We found this when we were just trying to prepare for our audit, and it's just cleaning up. I wasn't here when you authorized it, and it looks like it took place at the beginning of your fiscal year, not a year ago, just to clarify that. Because that was just the beginning of this fiscal year. So you probably purchased it right in there in the very beginning and from there. So I just want to make sure we have a record of it because of the cost.
By the time I halfway remember something about it, does anybody else remember about it?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to approve item A in its entirety.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Mize to approve the purchase in its entirety. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero to approve the item in its entirety. Next is discuss, take, possible action, approving resolution number zero-five dash two-zero-two-four dash one-four, providing for the formation of a capital improvements committee and appointing its members pursuant to chapter three ninety-five of the Texas Local Government Code. Angie, you're listed as the lead on the contact on this one?
Oh, I believe those were, all those nominations were sent to Brittany. Do you have them?
Yes, I emailed them out.
She, and then Councilmember Rodriguez just gave me two extra names, so whatever you have plus those two.
Well, one of them was already on the list.
It was already there, okay.
There's one additional, but he has it here.
So did you, did y'all all receive that email from her with all the lists? Then there's one extra name, if you can let us know what that other name was.
And Nick McKittrick.
That way she's got it on her list.
It's NIC.
So you should have those before you now. For consideration.
So the committee is, is right now going to be five names. We are waiting, still waiting on some information to verify as to whether ETJ has paid a sewer impact fee. If it turns out they did, we will have to add a sixth member from the ETJ at a future meeting. But we need to put five names on tonight.
I'll go with the two that I first did, Kathy Donick and Michael Papenfuss. My two nominations.
We need a Realtor, is that correct? That could be. I just lost her name in my head.
Deanne Wally?
Yes, Ms. Wally.
And the other one, Nick McKittrick, is in construction and development. He would qualify in that category also. So if you, did anybody else bring the list, or do you need the eight names? So the eight names is, the first one is Carney Eldridge. The second nomination is Deanne Wally. Third nomination is Riley Roden. The fourth nomination is Kathy Donica. The fifth, fifth nomination is Dr. Nikki Nix. The sixth nomination is Michael Papenfuss. The seventh nomination is Tony Strayer. And the eighth nomination is Nick McKittrick.
I'd like to nominate my two, Nick McKittrick and Riley Roden.
I'd really like to see Dr. Nikki Nix on there. She's a member of the school. And I think it's time that we start working on building our relationship with the school, with the ISD. And also she's somebody who will really research everything that they're supposed to be doing, and she was also very involved in their building the CTE Center. So I would like to nominate her as a resident.
My two nominations have been mentioned. That's Deanne Wally and Riley Roden.
So that has put us at six names. We need to, we're appointing a committee of five.
Well, Nick McKittrick has experience. Nikki Nix. Let's see, who else we have? We have a Realtor, which is Deanne Wally. So what are the other ones bringing to the table in regards to experience in infrastructure committee? Because that's what we're looking for, right? I mean, experience or knowledge in that, that area.
I would think so, yes.
For Kathy, it's the willingness to get involved, which we have a hard, this has been going on for a couple of, for a month or so. And we're just now getting these eight names. Thank you for the people that have came up. But she's been willing to get involved for a while. That's the number one thing to be on any kind of committee for the city. And Michael's done a whole lot for the city in the last couple of years, whenever we were at a, we had a low spot, and now we're moving up. He's going to have his way for the city. He has got some construction experience. He works for a supply company now for the business, so I like either one of those.
Can we list each name and take a vote?
Can you take it?
Yeah, like a roll call?
So are you saying vote on each of them individually, and then the five with the most would go?
Yeah, because he has six, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, because there may be some that some agree with and some don't.
I suppose you could do that, as long as they're unanimously appointed. And if that's the only way that you're going to narrow down from six to five names. Just a reminder that you have to have, if you're going to have five members, at least two of them have to be representatives of the, the three categories. So real estate development or building industries. So just making sure that at least two of them are involved in one of those industries.
Well, if we got Deanne, we got Nick. Then Riley, Kathy, and Dr. Nix, make five, right? Does that work for everyone?
I would like to get Michael over there.
So looking at the list, I'm sorry, look at the list, Wally and McKittrick meet the two requirement for developer and Realtor. So those would not be voted on. That's our only two on the list that are developers or Realtors.
Well, you still have to appoint them, so they still have to.
Well, what I'm talking about in the, the voting on the six, we have to have two, and that's the only two nominations we have in that category.
You could potentially, I suppose, have one group of five and vote on that, and an alternative group of five. Someone can make a motion to appoint five specific members, and you could vote on that, if that gets a second, and do it that way, instead of having to go through each one individually.
And then have an alternate, because we might need an alternate.
You can certainly have an alternate.
How about we do that?
The, the resolution or this ordinance would have to be revised to reflect that.
Geez, another two-hundred-and-fifty bucks?
Surely not. That would be an easy, a simple fix.
But I still think that, I mean, in my opinion, the other three, each member should have a choice whether we want them on the board or not, and they should be voiced. So we have four other, right, candidates besides these two, that we need to narrow down to three. So can we, we can go through and decide, kind of narrow, who has the, like I said, the most votes. Then that'll be the five that we all will vote on.
Sure.
Okay, so off this, as I said, Deanne Wally and Nick McKittrick, being the only two that's in the Realtor Development category, are going to be a carryover. The four that we need to do a vote on is going to be Roden, Donica, Nix, and Papenfuss, so.
What about Tony Strayer? Or you're going to take him off? And Carney?
We can, we can do all, all six. We'll do all six.
Carney's a Fort Worth code inspector, so, or used to be, he's retired, so he knows a little bit about infrastructure.
So first name is Riley Roden. Councilmember Yarborough?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know, no.
Yes.
Four yeses, one no. Kathy Donica, Councilmember Yarborough?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Two yeses, three nos. Dr. Nikki Nix, Councilmember Yarborough?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
There's two yeses, three nos. Michael Papenfuss, Councilmember Yarborough?
No.
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 Yes.
No.
One yes, four nos. Carney Eldridge, Councilmember Yarborough?
Yes.
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 There's five yeses. Tony Strayer, Councilmember, I'm sorry?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Got ahead of you.
That's okay.
Sure we're at right now?
We're at.
Tony Strayer.
Yarborough is a yes, Rodriguez is a no, Mize is a yes.
Yes, I don't know the guy, so I'm not going to, I have to stay out and do this.
I'm sorry, you can't understand.
Well, no.
Okay.
No.
So we have two yeses and three nos. So Eldridge, Carney Eldridge had five, Riley Roden had four. That leaves us with Donica, Nix, and Strayer each had two.
Ms. Nix, who?
Donica, Nix, and Strayer each had two yeses. Yes, one second.
So does that mean we need one more?
We need one more.
Okay.
So we're back, we'll run it again. Kathy Donica?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Dr. Nikki Nix?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Four yeses, one no. Michael Papenfuss, Councilmember Yarborough?
No.
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 Yes.
No.
Tony Strayer?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Oh, we had five already.
We were revoting on everybody else.
No.
No.
So Dr. Nikki Nix had four yeses that time. So the five names that came out is Deanne Wally, Nick McKittrick, Riley Roden, Carney Eldridge, and Dr. Nikki Nix.
Do we want an alternate?
That's, I'm sorry. First name was Deanne Wally. The second name is Nick McKittrick. The third name is Riley Roden. The fourth name is Carney Eldridge. And the fifth name is Dr. Nikki Nix.
Nix, can I have his name?
Yes, ma'am.
We cannot appoint an alternate this time, right? Is that what you were saying or not?
So since we'd be, since you're approving the resolution that appoints and appointing the members, we could. It would just need to make that amendment in the resolution. So I would advise what a motion to, if you want to appoint an alternate, to, a motion to amend the resolution to include the appointment of an alternate, who that alternate would be. And then you could by separate motion, do them separately. So you want to appoint to have an alternate and then have one final motion that says, these are our five members, and this is our alternate, and approve or deny that, based on the voting that you've already done.
Instead of having an alternate, if we find out that we have an ETJ, can we get two from the ETJ to represent them if they pay, if we find out they do pay the fees?
Yes, you could. You're only required to have one, but I think you could have two.
I would, I'm sorry. I would recommend we hold off on the alternate at this time till we get the definitive answer on whether the ETJ has paid impact fees on the sewer and go with the ordinance that was, as written in the five names.
All right, in that case, make a motion to approve item B in its entirety with the selected members as noted by the mayor?
I would fill in the blank for you.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Mize to approve item B in its entirety with the names of the committee being Deanne Wally, Nick McKittrick, Riley Roden, Carney Eldridge, and Nikki Nix. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Next item is discussion items. Item A, discuss abolishing the confirmation process for police officers.
So this was bandied about by Dean a long time ago, seems like years ago now. The confirmation process was apparently pretty much not even used before twenty-twenty-three, and no one else seems to do it. So just looking over some ordinances that seemed outdated and antiquated, I thought that this would be something to remove. But Angie made the point to say, hey, maybe we, you know, maybe some people want to keep the ceremonial aspect of it. I don't know why we can't just do that. I don't know why it has to be by road. But either way, it's up to you guys what you want to, how you want to handle it. But it's in thinking about, you know, antiquated processes that we do, so.
When we, we had the last one, I think Dean said there's only three or four cities that still have confirmation in their ordinances, that it is a bygone product. Is that a fair assessment?
That's what he.
Yes, that's correct.
And on the process, I'm going to throw you under the bus here a second if I can, chief, as to what the process is now for interviewing and hiring officers as to, so that they know what the process is.
So our process now is they fill an application out. The application that will interview them with a committee of five. Usually the mayor, Brittany Sargent, the fire chief, and public works director are usually on it. They'll ask a series of questions, then they'll vote from one least likely to five most likely, other questions, answers they give. Once we get, we tally up the points, it'll come to me. I'll look over, I'll get the advice of the committee of what they thought of the individual, and then we'll, we choose the best ones. I'll bring them, I'll have my interview with them, and if they pass through my interview, we go and see Angie, and Angie will interview them as well. And then the background will be conducted.
If we do this, do we have to, because there's a lot of, there's a couple of ordinances at least, I think in chapter thirty-two or whatever it is, that say that police officers will be chosen or by the mayor with the advice and consent of the council. So if we do this, do we have to fix all that stuff? Or can we just do it as it's been laid out here by chief? And just say, you know, to keep the ceremonial aspect, then we'll just have the ceremony?
Honestly, I'd have to go back and find how many ordinances address that specific situation, but you would want none of them to be in conflict with each other, so you'd want to resolve any of that. So whether that just be amending some to reflect a new procedure, whether that just taking out the, the appointment process and allowing for the, the process that the chief does only, it'll just depend on what your ordinances look like right now. Normally, no, it's not a super complicated process. It just might be more than revising one ordinance.
Well, what if we then, what if I ask for a discussion or a discussion and action item for, say, second meeting in July? Will that give you time to look over what you need to look over?
Sure.
We'll do it then?
Sure, so I can have a draft of the second meeting in July?
That's agreeable with you guys?
I would definitely like to keep the ceremonial part. I think that that builds community between us and the officer that they're trying to bring in, and it's good for the public to see them too.
I will say the ceremonial part is very important to the officers.
Absolutely.
Especially if they're newly, first time, holding a badge and becoming a police officer.
Sure.
It's a big deal to their families. They come up here and see us all together, take pictures. They enjoy that. The part that makes them nervous is coming up here in front of y'all, council, and looking at the votes down the line. But the ceremonial part is a big, big deal again.
So we can remove the votes part and still keep the ceremonial part?
Oh, yes, that'd be great.
That's my idea anyway, to kind of get us up to date on modern processes in cities, other cities.
Any issues with that guidance from anybody?
I'll just keep it the way it is, but let's vote. I'll do whatever we're doing.
No, it's not an action item, so no voting. Just a discussion item.
We'll do the vote July, the second meeting of July, right?
Yes. So I will draft however many, whatever it looks like to correct, to take away that, that's required to have a formal appointment.
And the mayor hiring process and all that stuff, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Second meeting of July.
You're gonna make me look at a calendar, aren't you, Scott?
Uh, I don't have one in front of me, sir.
We don't have those.
If you say so. Yes. Sixteen July for a discussion and action item on that. Item B, discuss the office of the city marshal, its duties, and conferring the duties to the chief of police. Mayor Protem?
Okay, so I was also looking at just cleaning up a lot of the things that seem outdated. It seems like a lot of cities don't do this anymore. Um, and it, to me, it's just more oversight that we have to do. Like, we have to make sure that whatever happens is not conflicting with either side of a city marshal versus chief of police. So I would like to, as per state law, says to abolish the office of the city marshal and confer its duties over to the chief of police, which is already being done now because we don't have a city marshal. Um, so just again, just cleaning up and doing some housekeeping on some older ordinances that are going on.
When did we get a city police chief? We started off with the city marshal. That was the very first thing. We did not have a police chief.
I can't tell you when we started having a police chief. I just know that right now.
Have any idea?
AC was the police chief.
No, he was a police marshal. He wanted to be the marshal. He did not want to be a police chief. Along the council, when it happened, him and Larry decided it would be too much. I don't know what the reasoning was. It was that. He was the marshal at first. There's some, I don't know. I just kept wondering when we changed. I don't mind, it's fine, but I just don't remember when we started, went from a city marshal. Because we never had two people up here telling people what to do.
But even that then, since we don't apparently have that, we've got to.
I just wondered when we started using the term marshal.
Normally, I think your marshal position was first.
Uh-huh.
I think your marshal position was first, and then as you progressed, you added the police chief. Like, you would do that. Um, other cities use the city marshal, a- and that's where it got confusing to me, because when you say city marshal, I think of the marshal for the municipal court who, um, issues or goes and issues the warrants for the court. They act as the bailiffs of the court, so they really work under the municipal court. So when I saw city marshal, that's what my, my, uh, definition was. So I, yeah, I definitely think it needs to be cleaned up, if you're referring to the police chief.
So can we put this also on the second meeting in July? That work for you?
Yes.
Any further questions, issues?
Roger, I, I, just to answer your question, and I don't know that it's answering it correctly, but I remember Healy talking about AC, and he was assuming, that is, Healy assumed that AC was chief of police when he got.
He may have been a little wrong, but the very beginning.
No, I, I get you. You were asking, when did it change?
He was. Yeah, he, he did not want to, if I remember right, he, or Larry, did not want to tie a police chief because it's a brand new thing. We're starting, all we ever had before was a watchman.
Yeah.
You know, and so they didn't want, a lot of people didn't want a police force in town.
Right.
Period.
So in your packets, I added a copy of what it talks about, the police chief and the duties of the city marshal, and that was ordinance four dash nineteen eighty-seven passed March fifth, nineteen eighty-seven. But I don't know if the name city marshal was prior to that, but these duties and, uh, talking about the police chief was in nineteen eighty-seven. So that's in your packet.
So that's obviously when it happened.
When they probably added the police chief.
Yeah. Three, five, eighty-seven? When it was passed?
Three, five, eighty-seven. Word notes four dash eighty-seven.
It would have been about eighty-five whenever we started the police force, I remember, the, the, whatever we got, the police force, about that time.
I got you.
Any further discussion? Item C, discuss parking requirements, chapter one five four, zoning, section one five four point zero one eight, off-street parking and loading requirements, subsection A, parking requirement based on use, fifteen. Mayor Protem?
Okay. Um, I feel like for this and the next item, we're going to have the same exact conversation, so can we just combine these items?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, obviously, we're growing, we're bringing more businesses down on one seventy-one, and what I was noticing is at first I believed we did not have any parking ordinances, period, for the commercial businesses that are going in. Then, as I kept digging, I found them in our subdivision, um, code, which does not make a lot of sense to me. And I'm seeing this as a safety issue as it is already. People are parking on the side of one seventy-one. They're going to these businesses, they're coming out into the middle of the street to get back into their car, and this is something that, as we continue to grow, is going to become a liability to the city. So we need to start forward-thinking on what we're going to do and maybe how to clean up these ordinances. I don't think that it makes sense to have commercial policies in subdivision. That doesn't make any sense to me.
Just so council knows, our planner is working currently on our zoning and our subdivision ordinance, because there's so many conflicts in that. I've probably told you that once before. But Mayor Protem Mize is referring to number fifteen, which talks about the restaurants and one parking space for each eighty square feet of floor area is where we actually found that at.
So Mayor Protem, then shall we set up a, an agenda item for your going next meeting? So then, second meeting in July, again? Or no, that'll be the first meeting in July.
We're actually working on the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance as a whole, so it wouldn't need to be an item for the, for the July meeting. We're waiting for the planner to get that information back to us, so we can do everything at once instead of piecing it.
Okay. Fair enough.
If that's the way you want to do it, because he will be coming and working with all of you in a work session for all of these type of things.
That was my question, was are we going to do a work session then?
Many.
Many?
There will probably be many, because there's different aspects of the zoning and the subdivision ordinance that needs to be looked at.
Would we be able to have Tech Dot available in those, on the one seventy-one parking?
Do I announce it?
Tech Dot, because that's basically their right of way, so they're gonna need to be in those discussions on how to admit that parking on the side.
We probably will have to, yes. I have, in, in a other, another city that I worked at, we had the same issue come up on a highway, Tech Dot. And although I don't know that you can do it here, but as a city, we looked for additional parking that the city could try to come up with. And it's, a lot of cities do it now. I think Roanoke, I can't remember where all the little restaurants are at. I think it's in Roanoke. There, there's no parking. It's on Main Street. There is absolutely no place to park. But they bought property, and that's where you park, and you just walk to the restaurant. So it's a very walkable area, walkable area, just like this is. And a lot of the parking is either that or back behind the establishment. So I've been in, I have been in this situation just like this. And so I think we need to kind of look to and keep our eyes open on any property that might be available that us as a city can help with that parking situation. Because one seventy-one's only gonna continue to have growth through there with retail, and that's your sales tax.
It is. I just don't really want to hurt any of our businesses there.
If we can help them, then we want to help them.
Absolutely.
Because we have that sales tax money. So, um, that's just something else to think about, put in the back. Probably come back to y'all about that later on.
Would that come through the city or would it come through EDC?
Uh, we can do it either way.
Either.
Either way, council will have to vote on it if it goes through EDC as well, so, either way.
On, on one seventy-one, Tech, we have a monthly meeting with Tech Dot. And currently, they are looking, I think, February timeframe, that from Crescent to Cleburne will be, start work to make it a super two, uh, road, which is, means it's gonna be three lane the whole way. Uh, at that time, they are going to also looking, well, they're also looking at posting one seventy-one as a Tech Dot, no parking signs. So they are looking at that now. The Rowlands also looking at their land is what it's being used for and what it's not approved for. So they're, they're both looking at that now.
It'd be good, I think, like you said, Angie, if we start looking into ways we can help our businesses, you know?
Yeah.
However, we can, uh, uh, you know, whatever we can do, we can try.
Whatever we can figure out.
Yeah.
Um, uh, we've discussed that. Um, Councilmember Mize and myself have discussed that, and so there is some alternatives out there. It's just moving forward with it, but parking is an issue. And as long as people want to continue to build there, um, you know, we've got to do something to help. And, and most of all of them are just sitting right there, right on the highway, you know? And so that might, you know, take some of the pedestrian traffic and move it on that side instead of this side of the highway. So I think that would help with problems of worrying about people getting run over. I know that's a huge concern.
So we're doing something anyway, right? I mean, it's, this is in progress.
Yeah.
Somebody's working on it, so.
And either way, it'll be covered through the subdivision ordinance on that part of it for par- parking issues as well.
Right.
It's something we can do on behalf of the city too, so.
Don't we own land back behind the creek, uh, behind those businesses, the city?
I'm not.
That runs back on that backside. We own all that, um.
Back behind the creek?
Behind, uh, wastewater.
It's just behind the wastewater.
Yeah.
It doesn't go. It goes to the housing addition back there. Uh, what is that one? Gottlieb Huts. Yeah. But that doesn't extend all the way behind the businesses?
Uh-uh, I don't think so. But there's some, a couple of other things we were kind of looking at.
And just, just because we're, I'm gonna branch off just a little bit here. Uh, we're talking one seventy-one. Part of these conversations we're having with Tech Dot and Dr. Dear from the school is also in on these conversations is, as they do this, also doing the, the safe, safe school route, safe school travel for, once we get farther down the street towards the, the high school and stuff from the subdivision, so it's all being, Tech Dot's looking at all of that within widening the road and, and stuff.
Because there needs to be a safer route to school, and there's, there is money for that with COG and Tech Dot.
Are they talking about widening north? Because that's really the only way you could go.
I, I honestly don't know. They have not said the plan as to how they're widening, but it's gonna be, uh, super two is gonna be the alternating passing lane, or as you're in town, we, the, the center turning lane, whether it'll go from Crescent to Cleburne.
See how they go south. If you go north, that's railroad land, but I don't know.
That's for them to fight over whose right of way it is. It's not our money, so.
So this won't come back in July, but know that we're working on it. And, and when we get some more information, then we can, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought there was a spider and I was getting ready to run. Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, know we're working on it and we'll be talking about it in the very near future.
I just wanted to raise awareness about it.
And the planning's a big problem.
Yes, and I'm glad you did, because it kind of gave us an opening, opening to let the council know we're working on the zoning, the subdivision, and some other things.
And the planner's with BV, right?
Huh?
Is the planner with BV?
BV, yes. I can't hear you with my glasses on, so I have to take them off so I can hear you.
I'll use my hands better.
The same way, on and off, on and off.
I do like my wife and use my hands better. Anything else for item C or D? All right, item E, discuss starting a Help Your Neighbor Fund. Uh, councilmember Rodriguez?
Brittany's gonna explain it at home.
Oh.
They're gonna explain it.
You won't be doing the background, huh?
Yeah.
This is a fund that we put together in another city that I worked at. We had a lot of, uh, business owners that wanted to, around Christmas time, come in and make donations for, um, people who were in need, and they asked how they could help, and a lot of the help that we felt like is if their utility bills and were too high, or they were having trouble taking care of those utility bills, maybe if we set this fund up, it would work out for them. That's how it started out. And it grew really, really large. Um, so you make an application for this. Uh, it's called Help Your Neighbor Fund, and if someone is sick, been hurt, um, had a devastating event in their life, they can make an application. It's all confidential. Um, bring it over. I actually look to make sure, uh, you know, that they only get this, like, once a year. Um, so we're, so that it's for everybody, not just certain people, so we wanted to have enough. And when I got to looking into it further here, N Code has a way of adding donations onto your water bill. A lot of cities do it for their animal control department, to, uh, keep their park beautiful, that kind of thing. You can donate a buck. And so we're thinking that if, if this is something that you like, we would not only start this, uh, because we'll have to do it by ordinance in order to establish the account for the accounting side, and then from there, we will start out taking donations, and then we will add it to our water bills. And if anybody'd like to donate, they can. If they don't, they don't have to. Um, but it'll be a fund available for, for our residents. And then, I didn't mean to take up that much of it, but I kind of wanted to fill in where it started out and how we did it.
Oh, no.
This is the information of how we did it over there, if you want to look, and it's all legit. I mean, you know, sometimes people have excessive, um, you know, they've had plumbing problems, and they paid so much to have a huge leak fixed, that that water bill, even though we make an adjustment to it, it's still very, very, very large because of the leak, it can even be considered for that for assistance. So that's everything in there that it talks about, the qualifications and, and what we need to have.
Residential, I assume, no commercial?
No commercial, just for residents only.
So I would, I would like to see this put on a, an agenda item for the next meeting to vote on. And again, it's optional on the water bill. If those of, like, I would, if I wanted to give five dollars, ten dollars, twenty dollars to this fund, when I pay my water bill, it would go into the fund, and the citizen that needs help can apply for it.
I'm trying to think. I've had so many utilities, I don't know where, one of them I had, also had a roundup option.
Yes.
I don't know if that's JSUD or that, you know, you can check it, your, your, it always round up to the higher, higher dollar, and it just, I mean, just another option to contribute to them.
Yeah, you can do it, you know, several different ways, or you can leave it blank. Actually, whatever they write, so if they write their check and they write it for five dollars over, we're gonna know when they put it in that five dollars is meant to go into the donation, because all they have to do is check the box for us. They don't have to even tell us how much it is. So it would be whatever the difference is in their water bill and how much they wrote it for.
As long as they don't credit, like, a water bill, their own water bill, and it does go to the fund.
Yes. If they check, if they check the stub and say they want that as a, other than that, it goes to their account. We wouldn't touch it, but they have to check the donation off.
I just think it's another way to offer, I know we ran into, whenever I was in there, we ran to people that were sick.
Yes.
And they were struggling, and they were just, you know, trying to not even get evicted. And they were struggling, and they were just trying to not even get evicted, much less worry about the fact that they had a big water bill. So I don't think that should be a concern of our citizens that are in need like them.
And in addition to this, um, there's another option that we can put with, I don't know if we can put it with that ordinance, or we can just put it in as a procedure that we do, that if you're over sixty-five, that we waive the late fees.
Mm-hmm.
That's a way of helping also on this part of it.
Yeah, because some of them.
So they just show us proof they're over sixty-five, and then, you know, there's things that come up and happen.
Yeah.
Um, maybe they were in the hospital and, because they always pay their bills first, and maybe they were out of town, maybe something happened, and it just got away from them, that gives us an opportunity to waive that late fee for anyone over sixty-five, if they apply for that option.
I think you do them.
You do them, you can do them at the same time.
Yeah. You also, the elderly, I do know, just from experience from my, my mom, is that your social security only comes at a certain time.
Correct.
And if your water bills due right before, then they're hit with that late fee, and they, like you said, bills are always paid first.
Yes.
But you can't help it if it just hits right after those are due, so being able to waive those would really help, I think.
Yeah, and we will check, just so you know, we ran into it a lot at Tarrant County, some people will go to this organization and get this much money, they'll go to this organization and get this much money, they'll go to that organization and get this much money. We will double-check to make sure that that's not happening, because if we do, that takes away from somebody else.
Mm-hmm.
And we're not going to do that when Catholic charities and some other charities has paid the bill twice now.
How much extra work does that put on you guys?
It's not, we can usually make a phone call and find out, probably in Johnson County, they have the same thing, and just see if their name is on the list. But we would check that at Tarrant County, because we found out the hard way and ran into that a couple of times. And it, like I said, the only reason we do it is because it's not fair to someone else that might need it.
Sure.
And we're taking it away from them, and I don't want to do that, so it won't be abused, it will be watched over, and, you know, we'll use it accordingly, especially when people are donating their own money for it.
Two weeks doable?
Sure.
Are we comfortable with kind of the parameters that were provided tonight, going off of that? Is there anything else specific you want included or not included?
No, just the.
Want to mull it over and get back to me?
The waiving the late fees for what, over sixty or sixty-five?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
Over sixty-five, can we, I don't know if those may be two different ordinances, or...
Okay.
What do you exa- what, what exactly do you have to do? You have to create some sort of guidelines or whatever?
So, and, so in order to accept donations, the city's going to have to have an ordinance allowing you to accept donations, so that'll be an ordinance, and then, which will be good, frankly, for you guys to have regardless, and then we'll have a second ordinance creating this fund.
Wonder about that.
Um, and that would lay out potentially the, the specific provisions of the fund, how it's used, how you donate, um, how you apply, things like that.
Okay. When did you ask for it?
Next meeting.
And I might be able to do the over sixty-five, waiving the late fee by minute order, if we put it on the next agenda. Could I do that?
Eighteen June, yes. Any further, any further discussion on item E?
Just to confirm, we want to see that at the next council meeting in two weeks?
Yes, ma'am, on the eighteen, eighteen June.
No, that's going to be the June, oh, June, I'm sorry, June.
June eighteen. We don't have any items of community interest listed, is there anything we're not aware of?
We are closed on Juneteenth, the city will be closed Juneteenth. That's June nineteenth.
Yeah. Is that the church, and Bible school next week?
Oh. Oh, I had something I wanted to let y'all know about, let the council know about.
One, one second, so the, the two items, uh, June nineteenth, city offices will be closed, I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry. We were trying to make sure that the nineteenth was a excuse.
And the Baptist church starts Bible school next week? Ma'am?
Uh, Brittany and I will start this month on the newsletter, that'll be going out. So we'll have it digitally, and then we will put it in the, um, water bills. Mm-hmm. We're going to hit it for the Fourth of July, and that'll be the inaugural. If I didn't get any pictures of you when we were going to do pictures, I am going to do those on the eighteenth, because I want it to be a part of the newsletter, as an introduction, if you don't mind. You know.
So can we set up a, a, another day for the Mayor Pro Tem to come in, so she will not be here for that meeting?
Well, I can grab her picture anytime. Yeah, a group picture, we can, we can do it, too. Yeah. Uh-uh, no, we can get yours whenever we're ready, whenever you're ready, we'll be good.
Pastor, when does VBS start?
Yours is in July.
July, okay. All right.
I've also had someone message me regarding the Fourth of July parade, so is there a Fourth of July parade?
No, ma'am, there's no Fourth of July activities for the city.
None at all?
No, none, uh-uh. No, and, and when we get ready to do our next budget work session, we will talk about city events, and how we're going to fund those, and how we're going to continue those, and, um, so, no Fourth of July event, from what I understand.
Anything else? We have no executive session scheduled tonight, we are only doing items of community interest once. Is there any further business? Yes, ma'am?
Well, one more time, Sean's last day is Wednesday, right, the twelfth? The twelfth, and so if you have a chance to come by, maybe noon, we, we're going to do a little something, something.
On the twelfth.
Uh-uh. If you can come by, whenever you get hang.
Last call, anything else? Meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-eight PM.
Seven?
Seven twenty-eight, yes.
That's not bad.
No, that discussion.